Good evening. I will now call to order the October 3, 2024 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting, and with that, we're going to have a prayer and then the pledge. So if you would stand with us. And if you bow with me. Father, thank you so much for today. Thank you for what you do for us and how you truly bless our town with so much opportunity and promise. Father, we know that, and we know that also there are many people that are hurting today from Hurricane Helena. We pray for the folks in Florida, Georgia, the Carolinas, and Tennessee. We ask that you cover them in your grace. You comfort them. You let them know how much they're loved. Father, we also pray for all the volunteers, all the folks that are going there. We pray for our local folks that are going there. Keep them safe. Father, thank you for our emergency workers, our police, our fire. Thank you for our staff. Please take care of them, bless them, take care of them. Be with us now as we go about the business of the town. Grant us wisdom and discernment as we make the decisions that need to be made. Forces in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thanks. It's been a long day. I'm sorry, folks.
Face the flag and join with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Our next item is citizens' comments.
We don't have any tonight.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the minutes. And our first item under that is approval of the minutes of the September 5, 2024, and September 10, 20... 10th and September 26 special call meetings. So Jeff, are the meeting minutes in order?
In order, I was informed on both.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I will entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the September 5, September 10, and September 26 special call meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. Our first is annexation zoning and plan of service request. Joe Haddix requests... We've got another request for deferment for three months. This is at Bill France Road and Interstate 840, annexation in I-2, C-2, and R-3 zoning request.
Yeah, this has been requested to be deferred for three months.
Okay. Any questions for staff concerning this request for deferment?
I move to defer for three months.
Have a motion to defer for three months. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this annexation zoning and plan of service request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is deferred. We are now on to the next item, which is a rezoning request, and this is from Janet Abraham Nassif, Rocky Fork Road, rezoning R-3 with ESO to PRD with ESO.
Yeah, this is a request you've seen the last couple of months, which has been... Changes have been made to the plans, and some revisions have been made, so we'll go through it again. But this is a request, essentially it's within the Eden Springs overlay, and they have requested it be rezoned from R-3 to a PRD. About 2.1 acres of property, and they have... They've requested PRD is to allow for five duplexes, a total of 10 units. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-3 and PUD, which is the addition to Villages of Valley Green, PUD. The land use plan does designate this property as the 24 gateway character area, which support a mixture of uses and services of both local and regional in scale, such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses. Major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Road as a collector. The required minimum right-of-way for this road is 30 feet from the center line, and adequate right-of-way has been shown on the plans. It will have to be, if this is approved, there would, at some point, be a subdivision platte where that would actually be dedicated. Informational only, but the required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute and 20 PSI, as long as the building square footage is less than 3,600. Number six, a... And just... Okay, just a reminder, we did have revised staff comments that are... We're not in your packet, so just make sure you... That's the list I'm going through. Sewer easement, number six, a sewer easement will be required to be attained. That's actually not the case anymore. They've actually moved the location of where the sewer connection is going to be. There is already a sewer easement existing in some of the open space that adjoining PUD. So the easement would not have to be obtained at this time, but they will have to work with the owner of that property, which is the HOA of that development, to install the sewer main through that area before they can, you know, do any construction. Number seven is an informational comment, just that the landscaping, lighting, buffering, and screening plans are required to comply with sections 5.059 of the zoning ordinance, which is the Eden Springs overlay plan. Would be reviewed in detail with the schedule of the site plan if the rezoning is approved. Number eight, we ask them to revise the architectural elevations to be, you know, inconsistent with requirements of the Eden Springs overlay. We did recommend brick or stone be utilized on the first floor on all four elevations. They did revise them from what you looked at last month. There's still... There's not brick on the rear, but they did add some brick to the front and both sides. So that's what they have... That is what has been changed this last month. And that's the last page of their packet of information there. That's where that is. Number nine is something public works. They have made some changes on the outflow structure on the drainage. That's something that would really be looked at in detail, really at the site plan stage, but the public folks didn't make that one comment, so they'll have to preview that. Number 10, they're... They had already shown a minimum of 38 feet from the front of the garage to the back edge of the sidewalk. They didn't have a dimension shown, so we just asked them to provide that dimension, and that has been done. And then number 11, the drive aisle serving unit 7 and 8 is over 150 feet in length. Fire apparatus turnaround will be required. That turn... That is not over 150 feet, so it's about 136 feet, so that they don't have to worry about that turnaround. And we... They had already submitted the water sewer construction plans, and since that's changed, they're going to have to resubmit those. I mean, that would be something we'd look at, really in detail more when the site plan would come in. So again, this was deferred from last month's meeting. So they have made some revisions. Again, we as staff had did recommend kind of brick on that first floor on all four sides. They do have some kind of stone at the kind of foundation area, and then brick on the first floor on the front and part of the side, kind of the garage area, but not on the rest of the side or the rear. Other than a little bit of one little row there in the back. Yes, let's hold up, yeah?
Okay, for clarification, when we're looking at what you're requesting on the elevations, what they've submitted in front of us tonight, is it... Does it meet what we're asking for the ESO? Because what I'm hearing is you're requesting more to be more in line with what we're doing with the ESO there.
Yeah, and that's what we had recommended at the kind of the first floor, kind of have the stone... They kind of have the stone, the brick, and then the siding above that kind of thing.
So first floor on front and side elevations? Is that what you...
I recommend it all four sides.
All four sides, okay. I just want to make sure.
These are all two-car garage units?
Yes.
Kevin, I think this is... This may be the third time that we've seen this after two deferrals, I believe.
Correct.
What else has been changed except for the elevations that we're looking at?
Well, I mean, there were a few other things with regards to the, like, the setbacks and the dimensions on those setbacks have been done. We'd asked them to change some things on the utility easements and extend the mains, the actual sewer mains within those easements to those adjoining properties on us to the east and west. They've rotated the buildings, units 1, 2, 7, and 8, to face Rocky Fork Road instead of being to the side. So they've made several changes. They've added the parking, where they didn't have any guest parking of any kind before. So there's been several changes made.
And did they indicate why the rear of the building wasn't bricked up per the recommendations? I mean, I feel like we're super close to the...
Sir, if you'll wait, I'll recognize you in a moment here.
We're so close to getting to the ESO recommendation.
Yeah, they... There was not a... I didn't see anything in their response there specifically to about that, no. At least that they had revised them, but they didn't say unnecessarily what they did.
From a staff's perspective, if the requirement for the first floor of brick and stone is met, where are you as far as a comfort level with what's... With the staff comments and being ready to be something that staff would be willing to approve?
I think from a zoning standpoint, I think that'll really take care of what we've got. Obviously, they'll have to come back. If this is approved by council, they got to come back with some more engineering details and designs and water sewer plans and all that. But from a zoning standpoint, I think they'll help take care of it.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Sir, I'll recognize you if you give us your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Chuck Rhodes with Rhodes Engineering here to represent this item. I don't really want to say anything, just answer any questions, and it seemed like there were some... We're willing... We tried to go through the standards for architectural and make sure that we met them. There's cementous material where it's hardy plank, which does have a... An insurance rating the same as brick and stone, but, you know, we're happy to do brick on the back, the rear. So, I mean, it's just if that's the comment and the concern. But I'm here to just answer questions if you have any for me and Mrs. Nassif, my client, is here to represent our item as well. So the owner is here if you want to ask us any questions, so thank you.
Okay. Anything for Mr. Rhodes?
No, I think he answered the one question I was going to ask him, so...
Whether or not he'd be willing to do that?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, I think that's all we have for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, it seems like there is one requirement that we have left as far as meeting what staff has and, you know, to make sure that we're meeting our regs and that we're meeting what's intended with the ESO. And then all other things seem to be able to be worked out through... Of course, it's going to go through council, then back to site and whatnot when we get... When we start looking at that.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve R-3 with ESO with staff comments and to include that the architectural elevations are completed on all four sides.
To...
Include brick.
To include brick and/or stone?
Brick or stone.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with staff comments to include first floor brick and stone. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to new business. Our first item under new business is rezoning request. Josh Newman, 308 to 330 Chicken Pike, rezoning R-1 to R-4.
Yeah, this is a... It's several parcels of land, six tracks, a total of approximately five acres. Currently zoned R-1, been requested to be rezoned to R-4. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R-1 and PRD, which is the Cantor Farms PRD behind it, in town in RM in Rutherford County. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial. Adequate right-of-way does exist for that street. Chicken Pike is designated a collector on the major thoroughfare plan, but not the portion that fronts the parcels that are part of this request. It's actually the other portion on the further southeast portion is designated as a collector. So this would just be a local street. Each of the requested parcels has an existing duplex on it. These appear to have been built in 1983, '84. That's based on the information I gathered from the property assessor's website. The area was annexed into Smyrna in 1992, so as such, they are legally nonconforming or grandfathered within the R-1 district. CUD had made a couple of comments regarding their water that they have there that they do believe they can meet their power flow requirements in that area. It's my understanding, I haven't heard talk with the developer, I'm not aware of any development plans, so I don't... All I can assume is he's wanting to bring these into compliance with the zoning... The buildings that are existing into compliance by reselling the property to a use or a district that allows this use. There are two or three more as you go further down Chicken Pike that he's not the owner of. He's requested the six that he owns, so I believe that's all that I got.
Kevin, with the rezoning, and I'm not familiar... I see, I take it the five acres is the overall?
That's the six acres, the six parcels together.
Six parcels are on five acres. Would this allow for any additional duplexes to be built on this?
They would, potentially. I mean, they would have to combine, reconfigure properties potentially, but there would be enough land area there if you have... You would... You have... Assuming they're... They're going to have to live with a road frontage they've got, so you have to have at least... Each lot could have 75 feet of frontage. I don't know exactly how long that section of Chicken Pike is, but... And there would be enough land area there that they could be torn down, reconfigure the lots to build more, yes. That would be a possibility, I believe.
That's a really good question.
Or redevelop as a single family, because you can also do a single family in R-4 as well.
Because it kind of makes me wonder why they even want to rezonate if their grandfather didn't at R-1 anyway. Is there a intent, I guess, if you would, to potentially remove what's there and go with a heavier density of R-4? Or do we know that? Could that happen?
Yeah, I think it certainly could happen because of the land area they have is enough to create more, certainly. Again, they'd have to work with the road frontage they have. The applicant has... I probably think we've actually... I didn't actually... I don't actually talk to him about it. I think it just... It was something that came in. So I don't know if he's just wanting to bring them into compliance from a zoning standpoint so he doesn't have to worry about a grandfather situation?
Grandfather's grandfather, right? It's never going to change until he changes it.
Unless... Or unless, I mean, you would... You would lose it if there is a situation where there is a fire that burns down, it's not... Or the use changes to a single family, say, or whatever. You would... You could lose that status.
But could request a rezon at that point in time?
Certainly could, sure. Yeah, you could always... Any point, you could request a rezoning, but that would be the only other reason why you would request rezoning other than redevelop, to potentially build more. I think it'd be difficult, the way they're currently situated, to build more. I think you would have to tear down and recomplete.
You would have to, and that... Those are in hard repair, a lot of those, so...
Surrounding zoning is PRD, what, R-3?
There's R-1 across, kind of across the street, and then you have the PRD, I'd say across Chicken Pike, I mean.
Yeah.
And then the PRD is behind it, that's the Cantor Farms, which is a single-family and townhome mix, PRD.
Burton Across.
And then Burton Farms and Patton Tree.
Which is R-3.
That's R-3, yes. Actually, the most directly closest is Patton Retreat. It's that front part of Burton Farms is actually R-1. If you get further back, it becomes R-2. And you have RM in the county across Old Nashville Highway there, which is very similar to R-1.
Kevin, as it's currently drawn, or it's currently laid out, and it's currently still in R-1, to Tim's point, can anything be added to what's there now? There's no room to do that, is there?
No. And if they added any... If they somehow could figure out a way to reconfigure some lots or whatever to build something new under the current... They could only... If they created a new lot, it would have to be a R-1 compliant lot as well as the use. They can only build one house, you know, on a lot, because it's all that's allowed now. They couldn't... They can't add more duplexes to increase more.
Unless we've added an R-4.
Right.
Right. It is currently zoned, right.
There's not any representation here, I'm assuming. Nobody's there to represent. Just had to ask.
There's not appear to be.
Yeah, had to ask.
So those are all duplexes, so there are currently 10 units there? Or is it 12? 12 units there?
There's 12. Like I said, there's three more as you go further up Chicken Pike.
So there are 12 units in what's requested here if it was torn down?
That was my next question. How many units could go in?
Yeah. How many units are we at then?
Well, at five acres, you could, I mean, you could have four... You could certainly... Again, you've got to work with the road frontage that you've got. In theory, in five acres on an R-4, you could do a 10,000 square foot lot and put a duplex on it, so that's four per acre, so that's 20 lots. But there's no way you're going to get 20 lots here because you don't have enough road frontage, and it doesn't make any sense to actually build a road here. So you're probably... Without knowing the length of the road, you'd have to have 75 feet of frontage per lot. So you've got six. You probably could get to eight or nine, but just by looking at it.
Could you do a quad or a tri?
No.
I just want to make sure.
No. R-4, one of a single-family and two unit building, one and two.
It almost have... It almost require a tear down, though.
It is.
Well, and so that's not a bad... Necessarily a bad thing there, right? I mean, they're...
They're older units.
They're very old, you know, and so some of them are masonite, if I'm not mistaken, so... So to Tim's point again, you could wind up with a complete tear down and maybe eight units to 10?
Probably.
Or you can leave it like it is in the repair that it's in and still have six parcel duplexes. You're talking about maybe the difference between six and eight or 10. Then you'd have new buildings and new units.
Right.
Okay. Other questions? Kevin, I'm going to put you on the spot. What's... What staff's recommendation here?
From a land use plan standpoint, it would... Either zoning district would meet our plan as far as the density level and that sort of thing. So, I mean, I'm fine if it stays as R-1, I would be fine with it if it went to R-4. I mean, it really... I'm not... I really don't have a strong opinion. I mean, just from the standpoint of worrying about really overloading the area with density, you have townhomes directly behind it. You know, utilizing that existing road frontage that you're already going to have, you're probably not going to overload the area with... You're not going to have 40 units where you have 12 now. You're going to maybe have... You might have 16 or 18, 20 units maybe instead of 12, you know? So from that standpoint, I wouldn't have that big of an issue with it. And with the potential, at least, you know, redeveloping the area, even if you added a few units, it might be an improvement and provides a little bit more housing that's maybe a little bit more affordable, too, so...
And for all practical purposes now, it's functioning as an R-4?
It is. Basically, it's functioning as an R-4, has been since it was annexed 32 years ago, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? I will entertain a motion.
I'll step out to get it going. I'll... I'll make a motion to approve the R-4 zone with staff comments.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the R-4 with staff comments. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. So for clarification, even if... Even if with the rezoning, they come back and they say, "We want to do, you know, we want to do a tear down and rebuild," we're still going through a site plan process and approval process from that?
Well, wouldn't necessarily be... One and two family doesn't have a site plan review, there would be a subdivision platte.
Yeah.
For sure. And you probably are looking at, they'd have to figure out how to get sewer to it as well, so if they're not on sewer currently.
Well, the road frontage piece is...
Yeah.
Is going to curb some of this, actually, so...
Right.
The only reason I'm looking at it this way is for, if that ever did occur, it's improving the homes along the way.
Well, I thought that was a good point.
Yeah.
I mean, it is very valid.
So then it's not that great of a difference if they did develop it.
Right. Okay, motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this rezoning request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This rezoning request is approved. We are now on to sketch plats, and we have Rocky Fork Road, 2302 Rocky Fork Road, owner to developer, Keppley Properties LLC.
This is a sketch plat. This is... It's for three lots on 3.46 acres. It's R-1. It's actually is an area with... Is within our Eden Springs overlay area. As a single-family, it's really doesn't... Most of the requirements of the ESO don't kick in for single-family uses. But this is just, again, they're wanting to take the 3.46 acres and divide it up into three lots. We had a few comments, most of which are standard comments, from 1 through 3. Number four, they are... Our Rocky Fork Road is a collector, which has a 30-foot center line from the center line right-of-way requirement, and they are showing that on the plans being dedicated. Fire flow requirement is a standard fire flow requirement unless it exceeds 3,600 square feet. Number six was just an informational comment from our utilities department, the grinder pumps will be needed to connect to the sewer main. All required utility easements to serve Lot 3 are required to be outside of the access easement. They are essentially the... One of these lots, Lot 3, would not have any road frontage. It would be accessed through a private easement. The other two lots, there is an existing house that would be on Lot 1, and then the two new lots being created, or the two new potential homes will be built. Lot 3 would have been... Would have been zoned as not having any road frontage, but would be accessed through a private easement through Lot 2. And then number eight, the legal documents establishing the easement considering maintenance of it have to be submitted with the final platte for review and approval, and have to be recorded with the final platte. So with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin or staff on this?
I'll move to approve staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments from Matt. Do I have a second? Motion is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? His motion is approved. His, motion is approved. We are now on to preliminary plants, our first item is Vintage Smyrna Block 2, Needham Drive, White Birch Avenue, Carriage House Drive. Owner developer, Vester Waldron Family Limited Partnership, TDK Construction Department.
So this is the preliminary plant, there's a site plan later on in your agenda, uh, for the development on this lot, but this is, Block 2 of the Vintage Developments, part of the Vintage PRD. It's about 19.01 acres, it's one lot, would also include extension of, uh, two more, two, uh, potential two public streets. Uh, we had, again, several standard comments, uh, on 1, 3, 4. Number five, the major thoroughfare plan does designate Carriage House Drive as a collector, and they are showing that right of way being dedicated, as well as the construction of that road, it's currently under construction, coming from Genie Lane through the adjoining apartment development, and so this would just pick that up from where it would end there, and it extended on over, uh, to White Birch Avenue, which was also, uh, it was built as part of Phase 1, and then the next piece of that would be built as part of this phase. Couple of just, kind of informational comments regarding, uh, an A wrap, uh, will be required for the bridge on Carriage House Drive, as well as the utilities crossing off, further from the Cross Harts branch, a couple of different spots. And then just submit the roadway lighting plans, which would come in with the construction plans. So, with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Consistent with what we've seen before?
It's consistent with the, the master plan of the property with the PRD, yes.
And this has been, um, zoned, um, this way for, you know, R6 zoning for?
It was R6, it got rezoned to a PRD, um, but, but yes, it's been R6 for many years prior to that, yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad they rezoned it to a PRD.
Yeah, we went down in the units.
Yeah, so, R6 would have allowed no oversight whatsoever. And, uh, when they rezoned it to PRD, it gave us a ton of oversight. It's kind of the disclaimer with R6, they had the zoning to do this anyway. They didn't have to come to us, they could have done whatever they wanted to, so, I'm pleased that they did a PRD to give us that ability to, uh, make some things look, look better.
Yeah, and they were more than, uh, willing to do so, and they worked with us very closely on this. Okay, other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Miranda, motion and second, further discussion? All those in favor of approving this preliminary plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to final plats, our first item is Spring Branch, Phase 1, 602 and 604 Rock Springs Road. Owner developer, Green Trees.
Yeah, this is the final flat, this is the Spring Branch, uh, PRD on Rock Springs Road, the townhome PRD. This is, uh, a plat to, to dedicate their access easements, utility easements when, within the first, uh, phase. So it's really just, it's one lot, but it'll be multiple townhomes within that. But, um, major thoroughfare plan does designate Rock Springs Road as a collector, and they, they are showing the right of way dedication with this plat, as well as those, those utility dedications. Comment at two is just a standard comment requiring signage, and then they did take care of number three, we can remove that note, because they had, it had a note in there about CUD, and this is not within their service area, so we need to remove that note, so. So with those remaining comments, staff would recommend approval.
Any questions or comments, Kevin, concerning this plat?
Move to approve staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Matt, further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? This final plat is approved. We are now on to our next item under final plats, the Courtyards Stewart's Creek, Phase 1, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner developer, Epcon Communities.
Yeah, this is the final flat for Courtyards Stewart's Creek, Phase 1, it's 14 lots, 8.13 acres. Uh, it's on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. We can just add a few comments remaining, um, number one's a standard comment, number two, uh, they are showing the right of way dedication of Rocky Fork, uh, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, should say, I missed that row, word. It is, it is a minor arterial, and they are showing the right of way dedication there, the 40 feet from the centerline. Uh, we'd ask them to add a, there was an easement, there's a, there was a storm pot, stormwater pipe that crossed kind of the corner of Lot 8. We'd ask them to add that easement, and they've shown that and labeled it, so we can remove comment three. And we had a couple of comments in there from lot, CUD, so with those remaining four comments, um, staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this one?
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Chairman, I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Okay, and we have one abstention and not protecting in the, uh, discussion? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved with one abstention. We are now on to site plans, our first is Chipotle Seven Oaks, Seven Oaks Boulevard and Ambleville Road. Owner developer, CSC Properties LLC.
So, this is a site plan for Chipotle to build their second location in Smyrna. It's located on the northwestern quadrant of the intersection at Almaville Road and Seven Oaks Boulevard. Parcel is about one and a half acres in size. Uh, they're proposing to use the southern half of the parcel and leave the northern half available for future development. A drive-through is shown on the southern side of the building, was stacking for about five vehicles. Vehicle are used here on the site, uh, about .43 acres, which does require 1,880 square feet of landscaping. They're showing for 1,880 square feet, so meeting the requirement. Total parking requirement of 24 spaces, and they're showing for 26, and that does require two handicap parking spaces, and that is what they're showing. The landscape plan shows a mixture of trees and shrubs lying in both road fringes. Additional landscaping is shown in landscape allowance within the site. The architectural elevations have been revised, uh, you do have elevations in front of you behind the civil set. Those have since been revised, since we received them earlier this week, uh, we do have revised elevations up on the screen, if they can review. The ephesus up at the top has been shrunk a bit, and the brick has been expanded up. So as a result, all four sides do meet designer view with the primary materials of brick and glass, and then the secondary material ephesus up top. So, all four of those elevations do, though, have at least 75% primary material, so they all meet the designer view at this time. Standard comments, uh, one call, comment number five on this, the major thoroughfare plan designates Almaville Road as a minor arterial with a required minimum right of way of 40 feet from the centerline. Seven Oaks Boulevard is a collector with required minimum right of way of 30 feet from the centerline of the road. Adequate right of way exists for Almaville Road, but a small area of right of way dedication should be shown, and also created via revised plat along Seven Oaks Boulevard, so the sidewalk is located completely within the public right of way. The comment number eight also, the, due to the tight constraints of this lot, we do ask that the building be state prior to, uh, foundations being poured and created, just due to the close proximity to where the setback lines are located. Several of the staff comments have been addressed, uh, comment one was the joint access. The reasoning for joint access not being utilized in this case due to the site configuration, the previous tenant was a car wash. The way that entrance was created, created a good flow throughout the site. The flow is not as adequate when you take it away from a car wash, so, um, due to that, they're not utilizing that joint access that was created with the oil change facility adjacent to this track, so, staff is still fine with the location of the access point on Seven Oaks Boulevard, it's still pushed as far back away from the intersection of Almaville as it can go. But at this time, we're still okay with as it's designed, just not ideally what we'd like to see, but it's still adequate. So, with that, staff's fine with removing comment number one. Comment number two is regarding the architecture, architectural elevations, which have been revised. Uh, we do still ask that they provide the dumpster enclosure elevations, which we have not seen yet, so, uh, just revise comment number two to provide the dumpster enclosure plans. Number three is regarding the auto turn throughout the site, uh, fire department has reviewed that and is okay with what they have provided, so comment three can be removed. Uh, comment number four is regarding the landscape plan, they previously were not meeting our designer view, but at this time, they now are, since revised plans have been submitted, so, staff is okay removing comment number four. Comment five went along with comment or four in landscaping and meeting the MTE requirements, uh, so comment number five can be removed as well. Comment six, add the sidewalk along Almaville Road connecting the sidewalk on Seven Oaks Boulevard. The, there was a sidewalk that was shown on Seven Oaks, and there's a currently an existing subdivision entrance sign as you enter in Seven Oaks. So, the applicant has resubmitted new plans showing that subdivision sign being removed, continuing the sidewalk up to Almaville Road. Charles and I met with the applicant prior to meeting tonight, they're not currently showing sidewalk along Almaville Road, but, uh, there is some discussion currently as far as where that exact location for the sidewalk on Almaville will be located at, so, staff's okay leaving the comment remain, and we'll work with the applicant to figure out the exact location of where that sidewalk will be located at future date. Comment number seven, utilities comment, the, they asked that a easement be provided to service the northern part of this property when that gets developed, and that'll be dedicated via plat, so comment number seven will remain. And comment number eight, just for clarification, comment it was a, uh, public utility and drainage easement, so comment number eight can be removed. We did just add an additional comment that the plat to dedicate the easements and right of way be submitted and recorded prior to additions of any building permits. It's a more or less standard comment, but just make that known. And with all the revisions that have been made, staff does feel comfortable recommending approval with those remaining comments.
Okay.
The applicant is here tonight, if you do have any questions.
We'll start with, uh, Mitchell, any questions for Mitchell? I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay.
So, Almaville Road is that a right in or right out only?
Yes. There's going to be a pavement markings in the middle of it to allow the fire truck to get in and out.
And there will be a potential, there's going to be another user on this property, there'll be another site plan coming in the future at some point. I don't know who that's going to be or what, but, um, they are showing this kind of, within the parking lot, kind of a stub, two, two places to the north for that. An additional development of something else there as well.
I think you said they're sharing something with Strickland Brothers, what was that?
When Strickland Brothers originally came in, there was a joint access easement for both these tracks to share an access easement to parcels. So, really, what Strickland Brothers has on their property is half a,
Half of it.
Point, basically, no, half's on this property.
Gotcha, okay.
That's what that is.
And have we looked at this before with a different type?
This was a car wash.
This was the car wash, okay.
And staff's okay with the stacking on this?
Anything else? I will entertain a motion then.
A motion to approve, or a move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to our next item under site plan, double seven airport hangar, Doug Warpool Road, Kitty Hawk Drive. Owner developer, D7-5 LLC.
So 14 Foods is proposing to develop a 17,236 square foot hangar, uh, near the corner of Kitty Hawk Drive and Doug Warpool Road. Access to the site would be provided via a single ingress and egress and one exit only, uh, both located off Kitty Hawk Drive. And the hangar would be located in an area with similarly sized hangars on both sides of the proposed building. Total park required of 17 spaces, and since the packets went out, they have some revised plans that do now show 17 parking spaces, so they are meeting our requirement. And they are showing for one handicap parking space as well, which is required. The landscape plan, there was one previously submitted, but historically, for previous hangars we've received, landscaping is not a requirement due to, obviously, uh, animals and such being near the airport, not a good thing to have, so, uh, they have removed landscape plan, and landscaping is no longer being shown as part of this development. Designer view, the elevations show the building to be built with entirely metal siding. Hangars are primarily built metal, and similar to all the other hangars out here on the property, so it is consistent with the other buildings in the area. Standard comments, uh, one through six while are made at this time. Staff comment one, we're concerned about the landscaping plan that was submitted, so, uh, we have now since received the revised plans that show the landscape removed. Uh, comment number one can be moved as well as part of that. Number two is a, uh, building code requirement, so that is something that, uh, buildings, they would like to remain as a comment for the splitting between, uh, dimensions of a building and our building, so, that comment will remain. Comment number three was regarding the parcel lines, you can see on the picture up there right now, the line is a, currently a parcel line for the property as of the data, so, we can't have a building being built in the middle of a parcel line, so we need that existing parcel line to either A, be removed, or B, be shifted. So we just ask the, that line be either, one of those two either removed or shifted, so the building needs setbacks prior to the permit being obtained for this, uh, property, for this building. Comment number four, the fire hydrant need to be on the public side of the water meter within 100 feet of the FDC. The fire department did have a chance to review these plans, so that comment is one that they would like to keep as part of this. Number five was, is a comment that we're going to revise a little bit. Previously, they asked that a foam suppression system would be required as part of it, since, uh, discussion between the fire department and the applicant had been made. Uh, fire department would like to revise this comment to just say that a fire protection system will be required for this building. And then comment number six is about the parking space deficiency, which they have cleaned up, so comment number six can be removed. And with that, staff recommend approval with those comments.
Okay. Is there someone here representing the airport? Come on up.
A few, a few folks here.
Well, I see that.
Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you introduce who you have with us tonight?
Well, uh, this hangar's being proposed, is consistent.
We don't know this guy, he needs to now tell us who he is.
Oh, excuse me, Mike Woods, I, I currently, Mike Woods, a lifelong resident of Smyrna, and, uh, serves as chairman of the Airport Authority, and thank you for, uh, letting us appear before you this evening, and, uh, I'll share with you that the Airport Authority has reviewed this, uh, proposal, uh, building, hangar, and it's consistent with our overall plans of development, uh, and our master plan. And, uh, uh, we're excited about having, uh, corporate hangars on the airport, they, I think they are consistent with what we're trying to attract to our community. The, uh, let me take just a minute to introduce some folks that, that's with us this evening, if I may.
Yes, please.
Paul Lamb serves as a vice chairman on the, uh, board, he's with us. Uh, Salil Rawal is, uh, our deputy director, and, uh, sit next to him is Evan Lester. Evan's just come on board a few days ago, we hope that he's going to be our new John Black. As, uh, you all know that John's leaving at the end of the year, but, uh, Evan is a, a resident of Smyrna, and, uh, extremely qualified, we're happy that, uh, he's coming on board with us. Also, uh, under the lease of this facility is, is, uh, our FBO master lease holder, uh, Alan Howell is here with his assistant, uh, Danny and, uh,
Justin Cross.
Justin Cross is, uh, affiliated with the, uh, development itself, so, uh, we're in full support of this, appreciate, you know, favorable consideration.
All right, thank you.
Any questions to me?
No, Mike, I just want to say thank you guys for what the airport means to our town, and the way you guys have helped manage that. John's going to be missed, but I, I've known Evan, and Evan's going to do a good job, so, uh, congratulations, Evan. We know your family, if you don't do a good job, we're going to tell on you. But, uh, uh, the airport's been such a, a major part of Smyrna and the history of Smyrna, so thank you guys for everything you do over there.
Well, thank you for those comments, and thank you for the partnership that we have with the, with the town, the planning commission and the city council, it's been a great partnership to the benefit of our,
And I want to thank you guys, uh, for your dedication, I, I know you and Paul. I know you and Paul and long-term serving and Salil and now Evan. You've devoted so much of your life to it and, and it's immeasurable what the airport gives back to this community. And I wanted to say thank you for what you guys do. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, a lot of seconds.
With staff comments.
With staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion with staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay. We are now on to Vintage Block Two, Needham Drive, White Birch Avenue, Carriage House Drive. Owner, developer, investor Waldron Family Limited Partnership, TDK Construction Company.
This is the site plan for the plat that we just looked at. The, this is the second block of Vintage Development northeast of the first block on the corner of White Birch Avenue and Needham Drive. White Birch Avenue is shown to be extended north to Carriage House Drive, which extends through Marlowe Development off of Gene Lane. The second block will have five apartment buildings with 341 units. Included as part of the development will be amenities such as a pool, grilling station, activity lounge and a dog park. Vehicle are used here on the site, 5.13 acres, which does require just over a half acre of landscaping. They're showing for .52 acres, meeting the requirement. Total parking required of 682 spaces and they're showing for 711. Parking, handicap parking space requirement of 14 and they're showing for 19 spaces. The landscape plan shows several different varieties of street trees along Gene Lane, Needham Drive, White Birch Avenue and Carriage House Drive. Other trees shown within landscape islands throughout the development and in parking area and shrubberies shown at the base of the buildings. Architectural elevations show the buildings to be finished with a mixture of brick, fiber cement, board and glass glazing. Two different colors of brick and cemented board are proposed to provide there in contrast. All of the residential buildings are to be four stories high with a, with a pet spa maintenance building to be a one-story and having a same mixture of materials. Just, are going to look very similar to what was built in the first phase of this development. Standard comments, one through nine will remain at this time. And staff comment one, to revise the existing notice of coverage to reflect the new limits of disturbance or obtain a new notice of coverage. That comment will remain. Comment two is regarding the fire department. That has been addressed to their satisfaction, so comment two can be removed. Number three, we asked them to show the total amount of impervious, impervious surface, which has not been shown yet at this time. So, we just ask that is shown. Number four is a utilities comment that can be addressed at the utility stage. And comment number five, the fire hydrants to be located within 500 feet of all parts of the building, and that has been addressed. And comment number six, the fire department previously had some concerns about the maneuverability on the site, but that has been since addressed. And so, comment number six can be removed. And comment number seven was an extra comment that was noticed today. It appears as though there are some FDC connections located on the buildings. Fire department will not allow FDCs on the buildings themselves. They're filed with remote locations that are currently shown. There's some that are on the building, some are remote. They're filed with remote locations, but we just cannot have them being located on the building itself. So, there'll be an extra comment on there. So, with that, staff comments one and three and then the new seven are what remains at this time. And staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Mitch on this?
It's a question, it's probably a dumb one, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What is thin-set cultured stone and does it meet our design review?
So, stone material, stone product, cement is.
It's not a faux stone?
No.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the staff comments, including comment seven.
A motion to approve the staff comments, including comment seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to our last item under site plans, which is Wyndham Echo, eight-two-seven Industrial Boulevard. Owner, developer, Holiday Properties.
Wyndham is proposing for a 124-room, 51,570 square foot, four-story hotel on Lot Three in the Colonial Town Park subdivision. This location has road access to Town Park Drive and is located north of the existing Kohl's and Dollar Tree. The site would have two access points from the track to the south. Vehicle are used here on the site, 1.33 acres, and that does require 5,728 square feet of landscaping. They're showing for 10, just over 10,000 square feet. Total parking required of 124 spaces and they're showing for 130. And they are showing five handicap parking spaces as five are required. The landscape plan shows a variety of trees planted along the front of the property as well as within landscaped islands. In addition, shrubberies planted throughout the site adjacent to the trees and around the base of the building. Architecture elevations show the building to have a mixture of primary materials of brick and glass glazing with secondary material of ephes. Both the south and east elevations have a minimum of 75% primary materials to meet designer review since those elevations would be visible from Industrial Boulevard. The north and west elevations have at least 50% primary materials and as presented, this building does meet designer review. Standard comments, one through seven, all remain at this time. Staff, comment number one regarding the auto turn has been addressed and can be removed. Number two, we asked to show, at least label the building dimensions. And of course, they have not done yet at this time. We just asked them to label on the plans. And comment number three, they added a fire hydrant in the back of the building to satisfy this comment. So, comment number three can be removed as well. And with that, we just have staff comment number two remaining as well as standard comments and staff would recommend approval.
Questions or comments? I know that we've looked at this a couple of times. Is this the same company that we had last time on this site or is this a new one?
It's the same company. It's actually a different site. They were on the lot next to it.
Okay.
At the end of that building.
Yeah, I was trying to figure this. I was getting thrown off a little bit.
Yeah, but it is the same company, same concept, but it is on the lot next to the lot that you looked at previous.
Okay.
But it's the same concept and idea.
We're now meeting designer review as this is laid out now.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that why it was moved?
No. That, that would have mattered either way on that piece of it. I don't know why they moved lots.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve the staff comments from Miranda. Do I have a second? Second for me. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just real quick again, this, with the ephes involved, this still meets our designer review, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 75% brick and glass where it's visible.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to the October bond review report.
All right. This is a long one this month, so I'll do it as quickly as I can. The first one is Hunter's Point, section three, phase two. This is one, it's about 75% built out. They did talk with the developer. They're having, they had some issues with some stormwater issues. They're trying to correct, get corrected. And they're kind of, part of the construction of the homes is going to help them correct some of those issues. So, it's one we've only had a year, so I would recommend a one-year extension on that one. Oak Meadows, section two. It's, again, it's one we've only had one year. Did I hear back from the developer on that one? Would recommend a one-year extension since we've only had that one a year. Gwen Farms, section one, phase two. That one is 100% built out. They didn't tell us or tell me that they planned to have the, everything addressed by spring, including the paving. It may be spring when they do the paving, just because they're going to try to finish up this fall and then pave in the spring. So, we recommend a one-year extension on that one. The buyer subdivision, that one, they haven't actually begun construction yet, but they have heard, since the packets went out, I did hear from the developer there. They've got contractors lined up to get the work going. It's probably going to be spring before they actually do the work. So, I did recommend a one-year extension on that. There's not a lot there from a public standpoint. Gwen Farms, phase one, section one. This is one, again, similar to what the other part of phase one, that they were finished up this fall and then in the spring, paving in the spring. So, they recommend an extension on that. Point, section two. Would recommend, they are trying to get at that one. They said they were actively working on getting everything finished up. Would recommend a six-month extension on that one. We've had that one a couple of years. Cedar Hill, section two, phase three. This is the end of their maintenance period. They're trying to finish that up and they're getting really close. So, hopefully we'll be able to release that. If this is an escrow account, we would just recommend a release app when they finish those last remaining items. The Oaks, this is one that's, hasn't been, they still haven't begun construction on that. I don't know that they are. Would recommend just a one-year extension on that one until, till they can, I think they're, I don't think they're actually going, it's, I think they're eventually going to kind of re-record that and kind of remove the reason they need the bond. Blading, section three, phase two. Did hear from the developers. Since the packets went out, they, they expect to pave and finish that up second quarter of next year. So, would recommend a six-month extension to see kind of where we're at, because we've had that one a couple of years now. Stone Trace. This is one, they're, this is the commercial piece there in front of the apartments. They had still several comments. Did talk to the developer. They'd like to place some paving, do the final paving until the lots are sold. They are, there is some discussion about potentially them, maybe at least on the Needham Drive piece once McDonald's gets done, they pave that section of it. But anyway, would recommend a six-month extension there. Buckingham, section one. This was kind of the end of their maintenance period. And this one, this was, we've had it for a while now. So, once they get the, finished, we could recommend the release of that when they get that done. Marlowe, this is the one we kind of mentioned earlier, next to the vintage. They're, they, they are hoping to have the road completed by the end of the year. We would recommend a one-year extension on that one, because there's a lot of work still going on on that one. Woodcrest Four. Didn't I hear back from the developer on this one? I actually said six months. I probably, I want to change that recommendation to three, because that's one that's, he needs to go ahead and finish that, pave that there. He's done with all the houses in there. He's paved all the other sections, but for some reason, he hasn't paved that one. He needs to go ahead and finish that one up. So, we'll give him only three more months on that. Gwen, Lot One and Two. This is, this is a kind of a two-lot subdivision, but they had to, they're going to have to extend sewer. They're not looking to do anything with this right now. They did want to go ahead and record the plat, so they had to provide us the bond. So, I would just recommend a one-year extension. We've only had it a year. Westover Two A and Two B, that's the next two. They've made several of the repairs open to complete the asphalt by the end of October. If they do that, they'll be ahead of their expiration date. So, if they beat that, we probably can reduce both of those and go to maintenance. If they don't, we would just do a six-month extension. Patterson property, this is where Spring Hill Drive was extended. So, they're basically, they're, they're basically, they have, most of, they believe they got both things done. They just got a few things they got to clean up still, but except for the final topping. They're expecting a full permit soon. Again, we've only had that a year. We've had it a couple of years, but that's, that's one that we're working where the city built the road and now they're building the homes along it. So, I'm okay with a one-year extension on that one. And then Buckingham Place, section two, phase one. Again, end of that maintenance period. Just a couple, we need some ad belts and, and then just fix areas of sidewalk. So, hopefully they can get that finished up before it expires and we can release that one. That's all we got.
Okay, any questions or comments concerning the October bond review report?
Move to approve the staff comments.
I have a motion to approve the bond report with staff comments.
I'll second.
Second for Miranda. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the October bond review report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review report is approved. Next, staff comments or other business?
The only thing I would have is, is we had our several special call meetings, joint meetings with the council. And we are endeavoring to have the, kind of the ordinance changes to implement the PRD discussions we've had on your next agenda in November. So, that's all I got.
All right. Anything from anyone else? Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.